I would like to call the January 23rd, 2024 council meeting to order and I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers, Ms. Mapp, Mr. Reynolds, Ms. Shinholster, Ms. Walden, Dr. Lee.
I have not heard that she's not coming, so.
Well, we have a quorum presence, so. We do have a quorum presence and we'll proceed with the meeting. If you will, please stand with me and join me in the prayer and pledge. And since I have Reverend Simmons here this afternoon, would you mind giving the prayer for us, sir?
Let us pray. Turn to God our Father, we thank you for all that you've done. We thank you for what you're doing in our lives. We ask that you go before us and make the path straight. Father, bless this meeting, bless all our council members, everyone that is here. Father, we just thank you. Father, continue to allow Millisville to grow strong and move forward. We thank you for all that you've done. Bless this meeting, bless all that are here and all of these things. We're asking the power of the Holy Spirit. We all agree by saying amen, amen, and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can see me looking to the back. I'm trying to spot my granddaughter. I know I told her, "Go to the back and sit down."
I think she's sitting out.
Oh, she's. There she goes. Okay, thank you. Good hour, Mr. Jordan. Okay, so at this time in our meeting, we've set aside our public announcements, our comments, so I'm going to recognize anyone who signed up to speak. And the first on the agenda tonight will be Reverend Harold B. Simmons, and he's going to be talking in reference to Black History Presentation Banner Project. Mr. Simmons, you have three minutes.
Thank you so much. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Harold B. Simmons. I'm a native of Millisville all my life. I'm working on being, I've done so much around here, I'm working on becoming a historian, working with Ms. Beverly Lundey Hill. The reason why I'm here today, I want to make an appeal to the city council. There is a banner project that we wanted to bring to your attention, and it is about historical people first that are in Millisville. This project was originally done in Perry, Georgia, and has been very successful. So I'm here to, and I want to read this to you, "Millisville, Baldwin County, Georgia is a historical treasure trove of forgotten, hidden African-American history, history that impacted the lives of our city, county, and state throughout the United States. And the perfect time, now is the perfect time to rediscover and present this rich history to our citizens and visitors. Millisville and Baldwin County Historical Banner Project will proudly feature our prominent first and proactive historical citizens of Millisville and Baldwin County and their African American, from this African-American community. Individual banners will be placed on downtown lamp posts from February for the month of Black History until the end of the month. Our mission is to create an atmosphere where all heritage is shared and celebrated. The concept was, like I said, was developed in Perry, Georgia." And I want to say this here, there's a certain saying, when we have these paradigm shifts in our lives, we say, "It ain't where you come from, it's where you're going." And then we have these other paradigm shifts when we say, "If you don't know where you came from, it's a good chance you don't know where you're going." So the latter fits with this project, what we're doing today. And what will happen is, these prominent African-Americans will be on a banner that people can see down through town, and they can know who did what, and it is this fitting for Black History Month, and this is a project we want to do and want to appeal to the city council if we can get this project done and make it a success for the upcoming Black History Month. And as I close, as African-Americans, Black people, copper-colored people, we are standing on the shoes or shoulders of people that we don't even know, and it is good that we know where we come from. The story of Dorothy, not Dorothy, but Alice in Wonderland, she came to the fork of the road and she said, she asked the Cheshire Cat which way to go, and the Cheshire Cat asked her, "Which way are you going?" And she said, "I don't know." So he told her, "It doesn't matter what road you take, but we know what road we're taking. We're taking this road that all Millisville and our tourists and everybody can know that there were some African-American people that done great things right here in Millisville, Georgia, to get us where we are today." And that's all I have. I love you all and thank you for your time.
Very well put. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons.
The next person signed in would be Ms. Beverly Lundey Hill, and it's also for the banner project, so if you will, Ms. Hill.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Beverly Lundey Hill, and I was born and raised in Hancock County, but I have been a citizen of Millisville for 26 years. I raised my son here with my late husband, and this is my second home. This is the home that I call now. So I did move away briefly, but I'm back now. So I come before you, for those of you who don't know me, I am a retired criminal investigator with the Georgia Secretary of State. I worked on the four Secretaries of State, starting with Kathy Cox, who is now the president of Georgia State, Georgia, not Georgia, Georgia College and State University. I can't, I come before you, like Mr. Simmons said, to present this banner project, and this banner project, we're asking for the use of the lamp posts downtown, in the downtown area, and we will put, as you see the people on there, we will put their likeness up and what they did. But I want to give you a brief, I don't know if you know a lady named Ludi Clay Andrews. Ludi Clay Andrews came from Millisville and was born and raised on Merryweather Road. Ludi went to Atlanta, graduated in the first class of Spelman in 1901 as a nurse. Ludi's parents, Ludi had a house fire here in Millisville, and she lost her sisters and brothers, and she nursed them back to health. That's how she got into nursing. When she got to Atlanta and graduated, she started at, it was Grady Hospital at that time, and of course, there was segregation during that time, but her skills were so impeccable that they took her in. Now, long story short, Ludi was asked in 1919, when they started registering nurses for license, to let them license her, and she refused. She said, "If you do not license every Black woman in the state of Georgia that comes to a nursing program, I will not become licensed." And at that point, they licensed every, since then, licensed every Black woman. That lady comes from Millisville, and there's many more college presidents that took high schools and built into colleges. We have so many, so much hidden history here, and Hancock does too. But I went to Perry, and down Perry Street, they had 74 banners, and it was beautiful. And they hung those banners from the first part of February to the end of February. It's a learning, it's a scope for learning, and I hope that we can do this in Millisville so we can teach our people and everyone else, you know, about Black history.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Hill. That's very enlightening to hear the story of Ms. Ludi Clay. Very inspiring. And she also was at Crawford Long Hospital, right?
All of them. Crawford Long was a doctor at the time, and he took her in because her skills were so awesome, and she even designed a cake for the one.
That's awesome. I didn't know where we got that little cap and stuff we were wearing back in the day, but now.
I forgot to mention that. In Grady Hospital, they got a meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you for enlightening us with that. The next person on the list to speak is Ms., and please help I pronounce this correctly, Mr. Mark Schwager.
Close enough.
And he will be introducing Travana Remedy to the community.
All right, well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the committee, council here. It's been an honor to be here. I would just like to introduce us and our company. My name is Mark Schwager, Jr. I am the president and one of the founders of Travana Remedy. We are one of the six license winners to operate in the medical cannabis industry here in Georgia. I'm here today with Rick Aviles, Jim Frazier, and Nick Satmary, from your right to your left. They are all a part of Sanctuary Medicinals, our operating partner within the space, to make sure that we have the highest-class operation possible and provide the best possible product to our patients. I just want to tell you a quick story about us, let to get you to know us a little bit better. I started this company about six years ago with some partners to set out to solve the medical problem here in Georgia. With a background in the medical industry of PI, I recognize that patients with catastrophic or chronic health conditions don't have many alternatives short of opioids around here. And that's a major issue, from addiction to other complicating factors, and so we recognized very early the potential of cannabis to alleviate a lot of these symptoms and provide medication to these patients that have no other alternative. And so we set out with the sole intention and goal of providing the best possible care to as many patients as possible. When we came out to Millisville, we took a little walk downtown, got some coffee at the Blackbird Coffee Shop, and you just immediately fall in love here. It's just such a good community and so many good people that it's just, it feels like home. And so we realized that we could have a very oversized impact on the community, both in terms of being good community citizens and helping out from an economic incentive aspect, from tax dollars, and supporting the community through community service or other things that the community would love us to do. And also from a career standpoint, because we love to give living wages and not only just jobs, but long-term careers to the people of Millisville, and help from a commerce standpoint, an educational standpoint, and then help as many patients as possible, because we truly do feel at home here at Millisville, and we want to help build this community to the largest and the best version of itself. With that, I would also like to talk about our operating partners with Sanctuary. They have an extensive background within the cannabis community, serving multiple states, such as Florida with over 900,000 patient population right now. And so they're here to help guide us in making sure that we have the best possible operation, both in terms of the safety, the product, and the community impact that we have. And so that is really what we're here to do, is to not just come and be in the community, but to be a part of the community and really help out Millisville to grow as any way we can. So I would love to open up questions, but I know we're not allowed to do that right now, so please, we're more than happy to give you our information if you have any other questions or anything that we can answer for you guys moving forward. We're an open book here, and we just, we're very honored to be a part of your community here.
So I'm going to give you a few seconds to introduce your partners.
Oh, oh, yes, sorry. This is Rick Aviles, this is Jim Frazier, and this is Nick Satmary. All of them are from the executive team on Sanctuary Medicinals. All of them have their respective expertises, and I'm sure we can, I don't want to, but, please, yeah. So Rick Aviles is our construction and our real estate expert. He's the one that makes sure the building is top-notch, every little nook and cranny's cleaned out, like almost surgical operating room standard. Jim Frazier is an operational expert with everything from the streamlining of operations to making sure that we have the lowest cost possible to our inpatients, so that way they get the best quality, well, Nick is the one that makes sure we have the best quality medication there, because he is the growing expert. He started with tomatoes and other very unique and difficult-to-grow agricultural products, and realized that he can have a biggest impact to the community and the patients as a whole by going into medications such as cannabis. And so together, the team has become a really good asset to us to make sure that the building is going to be secure, we're not going to have any kind of leaks of smells, products, or anything like that for the community to be affected by that. Jim is going to make sure that the operation runs smoothly, that we're really having a good impact on these schools, the actual working population here and everything, and then also Nick is going to make sure that the quality of the medication is as high as we can possibly get it. So we are extremely, extremely excited and honored to be here, and we would love to help out any way we possibly can for the community of Millisville here.
Thank you for your presentation. I allowed him a few extra moments because most people are interested in hearing about what you're bringing to our community, so I wanted to be able to put faces and names together for council as well as anyone sitting in here tonight with us. Thank you.
Mayor, just for an additional piece of that, they will actually have to rezone their property on central state grounds in order to put their facility there. You all got a presentation that was in my report that I gave you on Friday, but they will also be here at the first meeting in February to do a full presentation on that report. That's the meeting where the first read on the rezoning will be, and I think it would be beneficial for you all to understand a little more about their production process at that point in time.
Absolutely. Okay. All right. Again, thank you and welcome.
You said tomatoes.
I know, right? I love tomatoes. You said tomatoes. I was like. Also, I want to welcome Dr. Wilkinson's political science class members here tonight. Thank you all for being here with us, as always. Okay, so we're done with our public comments. You all have received a copy of the January 9th, 2024 council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections that need to be made? All right, there being none, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
All right. I'd like the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Mapp?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
All right, so I said the mayor's comments. I really don't have a lot of comments. I know everybody's eager to know how things went in DC. It went wonderful. It was exhilarating to be up there with my colleagues and feel like I was among the big league and worthy enough to be there. Just cold, snowy, and wasn't used to that, but I enjoyed it for the timeframe. I was worried about my flight because of the fact Delta kept sending emails saying, "Check your text messages every few minutes, because you might get snowed in," and I was like, "Oh, boy." But anyway, it was really, really nice, and at first I felt, I told Mr. Griffin, I was like, "Am I the only mayor from Georgia?" But then there came a friendly face from Georgia that came over back where we were speaking, from the Capitol, back over to the Sofitel where we were actually did our But it was wonderful. So I'm going to move right along tonight. I'm not going to hold you all. I don't have any other comments other than that. Well, I want to comment on one thing, and that's what Mr. Simmons, Reverend Simmons, and Ms. Hill made us aware of tonight. Ms. Shinholster has been talking about this for some time, of us getting something of this nature done, and I want to say, Mr. Griffin and I talked about it, and we're trying to forge head-on with some information in reference to this. She and I also, when we were at the National League of Cities this summer, this summer just went away, can't even think of the changing of the seasons, also this fall, we also met with someone that I think, I shared with Mr. Griffith, that I thought Ms. Shinholster had the information and would bring it to him, that would also make a big difference in trying to help us move that on. Thank you for that presentation. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager. It's in your hands.
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, the banner project is very timely. I met with our Main Street Director on Friday, and one of the things I asked her to do was put together a list of African-American community leaders from Millisville and run profiles on them on the city and Main Street's Facebook page during Black History Month. So the fact that you all have identified some of those people, Reverend Simmons, I'll be reaching out to you and letting you see the list that we have, comparing that to your list, and we will certainly use that to put the profiles out on our social media pages for this coming up February, and I look forward to working with you all to get the banner project done, because I think that can easily be done between now and the time that Black History Month rolls around again next year. But we will do something close to it in terms of doing the profiles this year on our social media page, so. Also, resolution, let me just talk a few minutes about the things that are on the agenda tonight, and I have two other pieces that I want to share with you. First of all, Resolution 2401-03, this is a resolution to establish a moratorium on issuing new alcohol licenses for distilled spirits and consumption on premises. Mr. Jordan has just given you a new copy of that to replace the one that is in your packet. We had looked at a draft that had been put together at our call work session last Tuesday. I made some changes on it, sent it on to Mr. Jordan, and now he's made a few changes on it to get the legalese correct on it, and that's the one that we'll be voting on tonight, or you all will be voting on tonight. But if you have any additional questions other than what we asked, talked about in our call to work session last Tuesday night, or if you have any questions for Mr. Jordan in terms of the changes that he made, Mayor, if it's okay, we'll take those now, if that's all right with you.
Sure. That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, and the changes are very minor. Really, for clarification, let me say that Hank and Bo got me this resolution way ahead of time, and at 4:00 today, I remembered that I was going to make some changes. It's not them that you're getting it so late. Really, the only changes were trying to make sure it's clear, moratoriums, the way they are interpreted, need to be very specific and clear as to what they apply to, what they don't apply to, and so made it clear that this moratorium is for retail package to-go liquor, distilled spirits, and consumption on the premises. The last paragraph of the resolution also makes it clear that it does not apply to renewals, and it also does not apply to a new application for the purchase, where someone has purchased an existing business that already has those licenses in effect. So that's really, you guys had talked about that at our last meeting, I just wanted to make sure that it was clarified in the moratorium resolution itself. Otherwise, it's what my law clerk, Mr. Griffith, had already.
How long is this moratorium for?
It is, it's 90, as it stands now, it's 90 days, or if council, it basically reads that it's the earlier of council adopting whatever resolutions or ordinances they choose to do so, or 90 days. So the longest it will last is 90 days. Now, that does not mean that, you know, if work is in progress, that the moratorium cannot be extended, but probably could not be extended for more than another 90 days.
And for those of you that are here with the media, we will get you a copy of what's been voted on tonight. Also, just as an extra piece of information for all of that, just in case you all did approve the moratorium tonight and we needed to get started quickly on the work of updating the alcohol ordinance, which is the purpose of the moratorium, I made contact with Dr. Max Harlemann, who was here with his students that brought the public arts ordinance to us. Actually, I looked at his schedule first to see what his schedule of classes was for spring semester, and I noticed that he had a public policy analysis graduate class, and I made contact with him, and he and I and one of his graduate students, Sarah Beth Rightleff, met yesterday, and Sarah Beth is going to take on the analysis of our current alcohol ordinance for potential updating as a project for her in this 6,000-level policy analysis class for this semester. So I'm really excited about that, and she's excited about having the opportunity to work on it, so. Resolution R. 2401-04, this is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a renewal on the statewide mutual aid and assistance agreement with GMA. This is something that we do every five years. It's between the city and the county and the Georgia Emergency Management Agency. This document is extremely important in situations where we have natural disasters or any other type of disaster within the county. When I started making calls after the Sunday morning tornado in April to Wayne Johnson and to some folks inside GMA, the first question that was asked by the people inside GMA was, "Is your statewide mutual aid assistance agreement updated?" It was at that time, because the one we had then was still in effect, so that tells you the importance of this document. And it's very straightforward. GMA creates the document, and we just simply put the information in there. Probably the most important thing, the two most important things in this document is who can request assistance from GMA in a disaster situation, and who can send GMA our invoices for what we do during that time. And even with that spelled out, it still takes, if you all remember, I think it was about two years ago, we actually got the final reimbursement check from Hurricane Irma when it came through. So it takes a while to get that done, but without this agreement and the hazardous mitigation agreement, which will be coming before you, probably before July 1, we do not have the opportunity to recoup any of those funds or utilizing the services of GMA or the services of the agencies around us. Resolution 2401-05, this is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of intent with Raymond James and Associates. I shared with you all when I emailed you about the potential for a called work session on February 2nd, to hear from Tom Owens of Raymond James and Blake Sharpton of Butler Snow about a potential of issuing a bond for the water and sewer projects, that this LOI would need to be signed in order for Tom to be able to do that. It is non-binding. It meets requirements as governed by federal and state law, and we have to have the mayor sign this in order to, for anybody, for Raymond James, to serve in the municipal advisor role. This does not commit him to servicing the bond in any way, shape, form, or fashion. It just simply does what's necessary for him to come talk to us about it. Mr. Sharpton will be talking to us about the potential for creating a public facilities authority in order to issue that bond, and that will be held during our noon meeting, noon call work session on February 2nd. Just a couple of updates on some of our committees. Sandra emailed me yesterday, Sandra Hall, who has served Sandra Hall, who has served on the, the, uh, HPC Historic Preservation Committee, has resigned based on the fact that she has received a, a job with the state of Georgia, working with communities on historic preservation. Uh, so because of that, she had to resign. So we currently are sitting at two members and a chairman for HPC. So I'll be getting information out to y'all, um, tomorrow about, uh, the need to, to fill those positions and, and to get your thoughts on, uh, potential candidates. Uh, also, if, if, um, you all know since our last meeting, our Planning and Zoning Commission Chairman, Mr. David Grant, passed away. Um, and, uh, Donald Hill, uh, has been serving as Vice Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission and will chair the next meeting of the P&amp;Z Commission. But, uh, we will need to have a conversation about, um, the reappointment of a chair for that committee, which if you remember is an at-large chair, um, and who that might be, and if it's someone currently on the commission, we will need to look at replacing the, the person who may become chair, uh, the, as the representative of their district. So I'll, I'll be including that same information in the email that I sent to you, um, tomorrow to let you know the members that are there and the members that need to be, um, replaced.
What district is Ms. Hall in?
Denise's.
Ms. Hall?
Oh, no, not Ms. Hall.
I did not know that right off the bat. I, I think it may be Steve's. Uh, I think it's Mr. Chambers.
We didn't do his preservation by.
No.
So it only matters.
It doesn't matter where the person comes from.
We didn't do his start, but it's planning on.
Right, it's, it's citywide, right.
Citywide. Thank you for the clarification.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
So you all make sure you all kinda get your thoughts wrapped around, but, um, once you send that out to us so that we can move expeditiously, uh, in filling that board because that's a board that has, everyone has to be in place on. And, um, as Mr. Griffin said, we all know that Mr. Grant, uh, passed away and he was serving as chair. And please forgive me, at the beginning, I, I meant to, uh, ask everybody to just take a brief moment of silence, uh, in reference to the loss of, uh, the late Dr. Martin Luther King's son Dexter, uh, just to keep the family lifted up and prayed for, uh, during their time of arraignment. Okay, so, um, we don't have any old, uh, any presentations tonight or old business, so we'll move straight into new business. I will ask the clerk to read ordinance O-2401-03 by caption.
This is to conduct the first reading of an ordinance amending the Land Development Code to allow the overlay of a special use rezoning of property located at 436 East Walton Street. This property is currently owned by James Simmons and zoned O.I. The applicant desires a special use slash rezoning for, from O.I. to C.C. for a used car lot with 20 vehicles.
Where is this actually located, Miss Aba? East Walton? This way?
This is at the corner of North Jefferson and East Walton. Isn't that right, Sandra? Isn't that right? 436 East Walton.
By the X-Sines.
East Walton. Right up, right north of the X-Sine.
Right north of the X-Sine. Across from the liquor store? That's what I thought.
There's a little plaque at the back of your-
Yeah.
A small plaque at the back of your, um, package.
All right, um, Conducted the first reading. Okay, so at this time, with this being our first reading, we'll go to, um, Planning and Zoning for this, um, rezoning presentation tonight.
That's correct.
Did, um, so were O-3 and O-4 supposed to be together?
Ye- yes, they're, I just need to read the-
Okay, okay.
They're two, they're two separate tracks.
Okay, I got it.
So they have to be-
Read separately.
-handled separately. They, at the hearing and so forth, they can be presented-
Amass.
-as a single rezoning, but then they have to be voted on-
Okay.
-separately.
And right now, it should be where you, where you read them both by caption separately.
Okay.
And you assign them separately to P.
Okay.
All right, you ready for me to read the next one? So, um, ordinance 2401-04, this is to conduct the first reading of an ordinance amending the Land Development Code to allow the overlay and special use slash rezoning of property located at 438 East Walton Street. This property is currently owned by James Simmons and zoned O.I. The applicant desires a special use slash rezoning from O.I. to C.C. for the use of a car lot with 20 vehicles.
All right, so.
And there's also the plaque at the end of the-
Okay. So this is, this also is a first reading for, uh, both ordinance, and I'm assigning them to Planning and Zoning. I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R. 2401-03 by caption, please.
I'm sorry, uh, so, Resolution 2401-03. A resolution to provide a moratorium on applications for and issuance of new alcoholic beverage licenses for distilled spirits and sales by the drink.
All right, do I hear a motion to adopt? So moved.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Doc, uh, Doc lives right here. Okay.
All right, then, uh, the resolution is adopted. Uh, there were, there was discussion about this moratorium at the January 16th work session. Does it need to be discussed any further?
We-
Coming from 2301, you've already adopted it, but then I'm looking at what you have right here on the paper. Okay, we'll move on. Um, I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R. 2401-04 by caption.
A resolution to authorize a statewide mutual aid and assistance agreement with the Georgia Emergency Management Agency in accordance with the Georgia Emergency Management Act.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
All right, the resolution is adopted. I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R. 2401-05 by caption.
A resolution to authorize a letter of intent to engage Raymond James and Associates Incorporated to provide the underwriting services required to issue one or more series of revenue bonds or other municipal securities to finance or refinance water and sewer capital improvements.
You have heard the resolution and the city manager's comments in his report. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
We don't have any new alcohol license applications, but we have two latent, latent renewals. I will ask the clerk to present the renewal application for the beverage company.
So this is the beverage company to, um, locate at 901, uh, West Montgomery Street for beer, wine, liquor, package to go.
You have heard the applica-, application. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Motion is, I mean, the, uh, application is approved. I will ask the clerk to call, uh, to present the renewal for Dollar General.
This is for Doll Gin Corp., LLC, doing business as Dollar General, uh, 207 Robertson Mill Road, for beer and wine package to go.
You have heard the application. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
All right, there are no appointments tonight. Is there a need to go into closed session?
No, ma'am.
There being no need to go into closed session, this concludes the business on the agenda. Does anyone on council have any comments or announcements? Chambers lifted up and Dr. Lee, they're not here tonight, so I haven't heard from either one of them. I think you heard from Mr. Chambers.
Yes, ma'am.
So just keep them lifted up in prayer. Um, I wanna say to council, safe travels this week, learn something, that we bring something back new to our community. Two years, we're in our seventh, uh, our third term of our last leg, so we have two years to put some things out here on the table, um, to make Milledgeville, Ballin County, shine, and I do expect for it to shine in these next two years. So do I hear a motion to adjourn on that num-, note?
So moved.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chain, uh, no, I'm sorry, Ms. Map?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
All right, we stand adjourned.